Good evening, everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 59453, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California GC 54950 ET Sequae. The federal Americans with disabilities, while this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the Zoom virtual platform. Refer to the last page of the Agenda for Participation information. Call to order, please. Everyone stand.
Let us pray. Father God, we just come before you, first of all, and want to thank you for our great city of Riverbank. Lord, we want to recognize and thank you, Father, as we approach Veterans Day, for all those that have served our country. Lord, we know that freedom is not for free, so we honor them and thank you for them as well. Lord, I just pray that tonight, as we go into this business meeting, Lord, that, Father, that we would be together in one accord. Lord, our hearts and our desires would be that the city would continue to be a great place to live. I pray that, Lord, even though we have this opportunity to share our concerns and our situation, the circumstances, Lord, that we trust this great council that's before us, that, Lord, as they weigh in what the state's requirements are and then what's best for the city, that, Lord, moving forward, that we would do our best and continue to be the residents and citizens to continue to make Riverbank the city it is. We thank you for it right now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Councilmember Oribin?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez? Vice Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Mayor O'Brien?
Conflict of interest, any council member, authority member, or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Do I have any from the staff? Okay, thank you. Item 7.1. I think I was, is Duke Cooper here? Okay, I'm going to skip over just to give him a chance to come. And we're going to move to item 7.2, the Astro Foundation Rescue Animals, and I'm going to turn it over to JD Vicente. She's going to talk to you about it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm Jadeen Vicenti with the Astro Foundation. I'm one of the founding board members. We were founded in 2012, so we've been at it for a little over 10 years now. Astro Foundation is the local pet rescue. We focus on rescuing animals and supporting the community. Magic. Okay. Astro Foundation is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) animal welfare organization. Our mission is to save the lives of homeless animals in the communities of Oakdale and Riverbank. By working with a network of volunteers, foster caregivers, and local veterinarians, Astro Foundation is able to rescue hundreds, actually thousands over the years now, of animals every year. We provide these animals with care and temporary homes until we can find permanent loving homes for them. Astro Foundation now operates out of an official adoption center at 157 North Fifth Avenue in downtown Oakdale. So if you're cruising through Oakdale, it's right where the Jack in the Box and the Mr. Car Wash is, right behind there. We purchased a little building back there and started officially operating out of that facility on the end of 2021. Oh, I'd like to also introduce Louise Sanders. She's another one of our founding board members here with us tonight, so. Thank you. And next slide. This is our Board of Directors. Pretty small at the moment. We will be looking to expand that next year, hopefully. So it consists of myself, Kimberly Sullivan Gray, who's a trust attorney in Oakdale, Cassandra Sparks, who's a retired school teacher, and Louise and Danielle Sanders. Danielle's with PMZ Realty and they're longtime residents of Oakdale. What do we do? We rescue homeless cats and dogs from the communities of Oakdale and Riverbank, both inside and outside the city limits, and also from the City of Oakdale Animal Shelter. We provide these pets with veterinary care, including vaccinations, spay neuter surgery, microchips, food, housing, medications, and surgery when it's medically necessary and prudent. We find homes for these fully vetted pets via the Astro Foundation Adoption Center in Oakdale and also the cat condos at the Petco store right here in Riverbank. And we do a lot of pop-up adoption events at varied locations. A lot of times you'll see us out in front of Petco in Riverbank on the weekends with dogs, puppies, cats, so we're all over the place, just trying to place as many of them as we can. We provide a space for local animal lovers to come and volunteer now. It offers a lot of folks a good sense of purpose and joy. And we provide education to the community on responsible pet care, including the importance of vaccinations, microchip registration, spay neuter, and also where to find services. We field a lot of phone calls, emails, that type of thing. So this is our adoption center at the corner of Fifth and East Street in downtown Oakdale. It's fairly small, it's 1,400 square feet, but we own it outright, which is nice. We house cats and kittens around the clock, and we have space there for dog and puppy adoption events, although the dogs and puppies don't live there because of noise ordinances. They live in foster homes, but you can see them there on most days. This space offers flexibility and efficiency of care, and it's adaptable to changing needs. We try to follow shelter medicine best practices, reducing stress to keep our pets happy and healthy. We work with some local veterinarians to do that. And, you know, we try to promote adoptions. Our little adoption center is designed with visitors in mind, so there are lots of places for folks to come in and sit down and have a cup of coffee, pet a cat, or a puppy. And it provides a space for community volunteers to learn about animal welfare and come and donate their time. We have two full-time employees there. Megan Schooler is our Director of Adoption Services. She actually came to us from the Tuolumne County Humane Society, where she had several years of experience there, running an adoption center. So we were lucky to get her. And Georgina Rattellis is new to us. It says they're administrative coordinator, but she's actually a registered veterinary technician. So she provides a lot of help. These are just some photos of the inside of the facility. It's pretty cool. We have some large murals in there. Some of the folks who were our capital campaign building sponsors have their pets memorialized larger than life in these illustrations. There's some of our cat cages there on the right, and on the left is our community cat room, where you can go sit anytime during operating hours and hang out, have a cup of coffee or tea, and play with cats. What could be better? How do we do it? We have two full-time employees and one part-time employee. We have over 50 volunteers and pet fosters. So we've grown quite a lot since we first came up with this great idea to start a rescue back in 2012. All of our operational funds are generated from the Astro Thrift and Gift Shop, private donors, and then we do get a couple of annual grants, one from Petco Foundation, and City of Oakdale gave us one last year as well. But we are completely privately funded, so. And you'll all talk a little more about our budget requirements as we go along. We do leverage relationships with a network of other nonprofits to maximize resources, including having close local relationships with the Oakdale Shelter Pet Alliance and Cat Network of Stanislaus County, which are some other advocacy agencies in the area that help service the communities of Oakdale and Riverbank specifically. These are just some of our building sponsors. I want to acknowledge the building sponsor levels went from $50,000 all the way down to $5,000. We're happy to accept donations of any amount, of course. Oakdale Veterinary Group was one of our big sponsors. Audrey and Sunny Paddock, Nina Smith, Cassandra Sparks, Todd and Cory Barton, Larry and Louise Sanders, Dell and Jan Vito, Mike and Melissa Tazi, Jay and Diane Gilbert, Oak Valley Community Bank, and Lester and Kathy Jenkins. You might know some of these folks. So these are some of our statistics. And primary purpose for me giving you this presentation today is just to make everyone aware of what we do and kind of where we're at now, where we've come since we started in 2012. The number of local pets rescued just this year alone through October 20th, which was the date that I updated this slide, was about a little over 800, and those are all from the local community. The number of pets rescued in 2021, all of 2021, was a little over 1,000. At that time, about 240 of those came from outside the community, but due to capacity limitations, we now only focus on the communities of Oakdale and Riverbank. We do not take pets from outside our local community. Our actual operating expenses in 2021 were about $270,000. Our budget for 2022 is $299,000, and with our latest employee, that's going to go up to about $320,000 in 2023. The adoption center was purchased in October 2020 for $235,000, and we spent about $80,000 on improvements. And with our capital campaign donors, we've been able to pay that off, so we don't carry any debt. Our estimated annual volunteer hours are 8,000 to 10,000. So this just gives you an idea. This is money that the City of Oakdale does not have to spend on animal care, and the City of Riverbank does not have to spend on animal care because we're out there doing the work and catching a lot of the overflow for what the City of Oakdale Animal Shelter just doesn't have space to accommodate. A lot of the money that's raised to support what we do comes from the Astro Thrift and Gift Shop. We do have one manager who's an employee, but everybody else who works in there is a volunteer. Everything we sell is donated by the local community, and all of the money goes to support our efforts. The building that the Astro Thrift and Gift Shop is in is actually provided to us by the City of Oakdale, for which we're very grateful. And Mary Buchanan is our store manager. She does a great job over there. If you haven't been in there to our adoption center or our thrift shop, I encourage you to go. It's, they're both really fun in different ways. Again, the benefits to our community, we ease demand on the local animal shelter by reducing intake and the cost of animal care, as well as the need for staffing. We reduce euthanasia and associated costs. We provide space for future efforts to reduce pet homelessness, i.e., you know, TNR, which is a trap neuter release program, microchip program. These are things we're looking at doing in the future as we expand and as budget allows. And we provide an alternative shelter for Riverbank and community pet surrenders. There's a lot of folks, especially in the last couple of years, losing their homes, and they can't take their pets with them. So we've taken a lot of surrendered pets from folks who have to move and just they can't take their pets. Really sad. We also, time to time, take in found and stray pets. We always try to find an owner first, of course. And why do we do all this? The Oakdale Animal Shelter is quite small and quite old. It's over 50 years old. It was built to serve a community of 5,000 residents. It now serves over 50,000 residents. It's in a poor location between the gun range and the water waste treatment plant. It's not really visible to passing traffic. It's noisy, being right next to the gun range, and pretty stressful to pets, the dogs especially. Inadequate operating hours. It's only 800 square feet. It's pretty overcrowded. They don't have much quarantine space. Definitely don't have room for many cats, so sometimes euthanasia is their only option. There are some outside-only kennels, which are subject to extreme weather conditions, whether it's 114 degrees outside or 23 degrees outside. And there's some old rusted fencing. So it's just, there's so many reasons why we started Astro Foundation, is to help pick up a lot of the overflow for what this little shelter just cannot accommodate. One of the ways that folks can support Astro Foundation is by joining our Poet Forward Club with a recurring weekly donation of $5 or more. We actually have quite a few Poet Forward Club members. And it's amazing, those little donations, whether it's $5 a week or $20 a month, it doesn't take much, but it adds up, and it really helps us to keep doing what we're doing. So that's one way that folks can support us. And then we always need folks to foster pets, especially our dogs and puppies. We can't keep them in the facility, so if anyone out there has a love for dogs and puppies and wants to foster for us, we would love to have your assistance. There's no cost to foster. We provide all the food, litter, veterinary care. Fosters are responsible for bringing their pets to adoption events and to veterinary appointments. But the experience can be very rewarding, and it's a great way for young people especially to earn some community service credits. And that's pretty much it. That's all there is to tell. In a nutshell, the Cliff Notes version about Astro Foundation, but any questions for us?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. I've watched you grow since 2012, and you are doing an incredible job for Riverbank and for Oakdale. And I, most cities want to thank you for taking care of this because we can't handle it by ourselves.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Happy to do it.
Thank you.
I have a comment, too. I just want to say thank you for your service. I remember when you first got started also, so thank you. You've really grown. And just a couple of questions. The ages of the volunteers, what age they have to be, what's the minimum age?
You know, I don't know that there is a minimum age. You know, I actually would have to check in with Megan, who's our Director of Adoption Services, to see where she landed on that. I know that's something that was being discussed, but I know she had some high school kids in there, I think as young as 14.
Okay. And the gift shop, is it located at the center or is it a separate building?
Separate building. So we actually own the building the adoption center is in, where the animals are kept. And then the Thrift and Gift Shop is at, is it 250 East E? 250 East E Street, right across the street from House of Beef in downtown Oakdale. And again, that building is owned by the City of Oakdale, so they're gracious enough to let us use it so that we can continue to generate funds and keep doing what we're doing. But yeah, holidays are fun down there. Lots of goodies.
Thank you.
Hold it.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to now go back to item 7.1, Veterans Day Proclamation. And I'm going to come and read it.
Vice Mayor, before you begin, if you'd like to invite Duke Cooper from American Veterans First to the podium, please.
I almost forgot you. I forget lots of things. Okay, Duke, in case you don't know, runs a museum in Veterans First that's located in Riverbank, and he's got a wonderful museum. And you can stop by and see it. It's right down there, just behind the Cruiser's gas station. So it's open at certain times, and he could tell you about that. City of Riverbank Proclamation, Veterans Day 2022, Honoring American Veterans First. Whereas Veterans Day has its origins in the November 11, 1918 armistice, which brought World War I to a conclusion. And whereas American veterans have fought to defend our country, its values, and its interests since the first day of our founding, they have defeated tyrants, eliminated terrorists, and secured freedom at home and abroad. Their courage and fortitude in the face of adversity serve as an example for all Americans. Whereas for their love of country and dedication to duty, America's veterans have endured adversity, loneliness, fatigue, loss, and made other incredible sacrifices. Many sustained life altering physical injuries and disabilities. Others bear the burden of emotional scars for the remainder of their lives. Whereas American Veterans First has helped and supported our Riverbank veterans through tough circumstances. Veterans have been able to receive assistance with food, housing, employment, and other needs. We applaud their efforts at the state and federal level. Pathway to citizenship for U.S. veterans who have been deported from the country they served. Whereas our community is honored to have an organization like Americans Veterans First that improve the quality of life for our veterans. Now therefore, I, Cal Campbell, Vice Mayor of Riverbank, California, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2022, as Veterans Day, as well as honoring all the hard work and dedication American Veterans First has provided to the veterans in our community, dated this 8th day of November 2022. Thank you.
That without the crew that we have at American Veterans First, I wouldn't be sitting at home playing with my race car or something. So this is our executive secretary, Paige McGlaughlin. Could not do without her. She's a retired Modesto Police Detective. Jan McCormick, she's kind of like my older sister. She keeps me in shape, where I need to be. I'm very proud. We got Fast Eddie here. He's one of our regulars. We're always looking for volunteers. This Friday coming, we have a Congressional Medal of Honor recipient that's going to be with us for dinner. If you're interested in attending that, it's at AmericanVeteransFirst.net. And it's going to be a great time. It's truly an honor. A lot of friends I see up here, Louise and Cal. Thank you so much for the honor.
Item 7.3, 2022 Cheese and Wine Festival Evaluation. And I'm going to let Sue Fitzpatrick, the head of our parts and recreation department, tell us about it.
Vice Mayor and members of the council, just wanted to kind of, whilst fresh in our minds, go through the, how the festival went this year. Just kind of give you an update and get some thinking for next year. So background information, just, I know there's some new members of the community and maybe aren't familiar with the history of the Cheese and Wine. So quickly, just wanted to kind of go over that a little bit. So the festival has been held in Riverbank for the past 45 years. The Riverbank Chamber of Commerce ran the festival for the first 29 years. And back then, the festival was at its peak. We had probably 300 vendors. We went from the downtown Riverbank all the way down to the community center, and that's where the wine tasting was held. And for many years, it was a real booming festival. There wasn't a lot of festivals back then. So later on, the chamber decided they couldn't do that anymore, and Riverbank Rotary Club, which we had the Rotary back then, took over the festival, and they ran it for the next eight years. And they did a good job as well, and that's when the downtown was just being developed. And the challenge for the Rotary Club, I know towards the end, was trying to use the downtown and make it all the way down to the community center with vendors so that we could use our community center for the wine tasting. And towards the end of their run, they had trouble with that. The vendors went down to probably 150 vendors from the peak of the 300. So at some point, they decided that they couldn't do that anymore, both operationally, they had a small Rotary Club, and financially. So they tried to sell the festival to any other clubs that might want it or any other organizations, and no one wanted the festival. So the City of Riverbank was faced with the decision to either let the festival die, which we knew how important it was to the community, or to take it over. So my department is very small, so we decided to do that, but also contracted out. So Parks and Recreation with the city would take over the event, but contracted out to someone who could oversee that type of large festival. So what happened is, after much discussion, the City of Riverbank purchased the festival for $15,000 from the Rotary Club and took it on. And we have been overseeing it for the past eight years. So that's kind of how we got to be where we are now. So the first time we put the festival out to bid, there were only three bids. There was only three organizations that wanted to try to take on the festival. Chris Ricky Presents was the low bidder, and he oversaw the festival with the City of Riverbank for the next five years. We did very well. We learned a lot the first few years, and so did our organizer. But we did well financially and operationally. We used the downtown as the focal point because it was, you know, developed and nice, and we really didn't have enough vendors to get down to the community center, so we rented the really nice Antigua Event Center. That went well. The sixth year of our operation, COVID hit, so we had to cancel the festival that year. So we lost some momentum. Then we decided to put the event out to bid again, and we contracted with Simply Divine Events. And that's who we've And that's who we've contracted with for the past two years. So as far as this year, the positive outcome of this year's festival, we had an increased number of vendors. We were finally able to have the festival be downtown and also go all the way down to the community center. So we were able to use the community center as our wine tasting venue again. That was a real positive thing. The new boundary was successful. We didn't have any complaints from the residential area where the, the festival didn't really hit residential for the past five years. So it was kind of new. No complaints on that end. Everything went smoothly. Well, it was well attended and enjoyed by the community. And most of all, the event was safe. We didn't have any problems. We had a lot of, of things in place for safety, just with the, the way the times are now. So that was a real good thing for it to be safe. The negative outcome of the festival is, we did have some, and we've experienced with, with, with both of our contractors, is there was a lack of follow-through. So that makes it hard for the city staff when we try to put things in place and, and they aren't followed through. Little to no crew, which required a lot of city intervention, communication breakdowns, things like that. We felt overall the event lacked full attention. There was a, a lack of publicity for sure. I know we all wanted to see a lot more publicity. We didn't see that. And lack of adequate financial oversight. So one of our goals this year was to not have the city micromanage. And so we tried to put more things in the contractor's court, which probably was not a real good decision because the buck stops with the city. And we need to, we need to have better oversight. Financial income sponsorships were down. Financial outcomes, sponsorships were down by at least 10,000. We had a lot of no's this time, probably because of the economy, just kind of the way things are right now. Costs for fencing, restrooms, all of those type of things that make the festival happen were inflated. Inflation hit us hard. Less tickets were sold for the wine tasting. Whether that was because of the economy or because of the lack of publicity, we don't know for sure. Less beer was sold, and that is, that is kind of new. We usually, that is one of our real good revenue sources. Usually, we don't know if that is because there was more competition downtown. We had more businesses open that were selling alcohol, which is a good thing. We want businesses to do well, but did that affect our, our sales? We're not sure. Was it the brand of beer? It was a little different than, than in the past. But basically, less beer was sold, and that was one of our revenue sources that we counted on.
Were you guys operating the entire time that the festival was open?
Pretty much. Got a late start in the morning on the first day. But overall, some of the businesses started selling alcohol before we did. We don't know, all of those factors, we don't know if that had a, you know, and result in that. So the contractor fee was 5,000 more than the last year. Last year, we paid the contractor 20,000 for the service. And this year, it was 25 was the bid. That's 10,000 more than the original contract. When we first contracted out the event, it was 15,000. So that worked against us, I think, from the get-go. Revenue just basically did not keep up with the costs. Preliminary, preliminary numbers show that there was a deficit of about 22,000 for this year. So that's different. Looking at that in a more positive way, though, is we've done the festival for eight years. And in those eight years, we never needed general fund support. We always created enough revenue to offset, set the expenses. Also, we raised enough revenue to pay for the cost of the event when we purchased it from the Rotary Club. We paid for that through our revenue. So in the long run, probably the festival cost us about 3,000 a year. If we look at it in that way, we had a bad year. So there's a lot of things working against us this year. What we have learned is that we have limited staffing. An event of this size is very hard for our staff. So it would be hard to take it over completely if we wanted to, to just run it through the city and not contract out. Oversight is very necessary. It's a city event. The city has to be very involved. Lack of follow-through, we've kind of noticed that with contractors. And that is, that is a burden for the city when we have to pick up the slack. Logistics, we found we can do the logistics in-house with our city staff between Public Works and Parks. We know how to do that. We're able to do that. It's almost easier if we do that part of it. Vendor oversight, the recreation division can do that. We know what is important to the community. We know that they, that the community wants a lot of wine in the wine tasting. We know they want a lot of cheeses. They, we know what we have heard people want from the festival. So we've learned that over the years. Just some workable solutions to kind of think about as we move forward to whether we want to continue the event or, or not. Just some solutions I was wanting to present is, number one, is to put the festival out to bid and seek a new contractor. I'm going to just go forward to finish this solution one. If we did that financial oversight with the city, it would need to be back in our court. The budget funds for deficit, we would like to ask the city to give some funding just in case we have a deficit again because we don't know what's going to happen with inflation and the economy. Solution number two, have city staff control the logistics, publicity, vendors, and security, which we're capable of doing, but contract out only the wine and cheese and beer booth portion, maybe some of the musical stages, just because that is a little bit out of our realm. If we did that, oops, sorry, if we did that solution two, within the cheese and wine budget, we'd probably ask to hire a part-time recreation person to assist with that special event for that period of time, just because we have limited staff. Solution number three, terminate the festival. Maybe just feel it's just too, too expensive to operate. Replace with a new festival, maybe a jazz festival, multicultural festival, or, or some other idea that somebody might come up with. And, and just knowing that the Cheese and Wine Festival is, it's a, it's a large festival with a lot of components that can be very costly, especially now with the security. We have to have fencing. We have to have fencing all the way down. We have to have cement blocks brought in by our staff so that people don't drive through the festival. It's a lot different now, and all of those things are very, very costly. A new event could be designed if the community and the council wanted us to. That could create revenue that would be less complicated and that we could handle within our, our own staffing. So those are just some ideas. What, what I wanted to present is maybe those ideas and have everyone think about it for a little bit. It's important to start the planning for whatever we're going to do in February of 2023. We need that much time to plan. Meanwhile, could, I could bring back the, this item with more concrete suggestions in January of 2023. Meanwhile, I would also do some more research on, are there other contractors who might be interested? Or what are some other festivals? Or how could we do this to make it work to where it's not a cost to the city and the general fund?
Sue, I have a comment. I know that during the fall, when you have it, there's been a whole lot more festivals going on at the same time. Years ago, those festivals didn't exist. And we might consider doing it at a time, you know, during the year when we're not competing with bigger festivals all around us. I mean, this, the cities around us during that period, we're all over, just besides the Cheese and Wine Festival.
Correct.
So just a quick comment. I'm glad we don't, we don't have to make the decision today because we're still kind of running the preliminary, preliminary numbers. Can never say that word. But I think the right track would be to obviously not overload the staff. The staff just can't do it by themselves, right? So I think the oversight logistics is something that you guys can do. I think we can contract the rest of the stuff out. There was, there was, there was a lot of signage, signage issues. Just people just kind of lost, wondering where the wine tasting was at. And I was directing people, which, you know, something I shouldn't, should not, should not have been doing. And then no entertainment inside the wine tasting, which was a little let down for me, too. I thought, you know, just something just kind of walked in, just kind of felt the vibe. Just people just kind of staring at each other for a little bit, for being a little honest there. Yeah, so that's the direction I would like to see. I'd like to see more options. Though I would like to see, definitely not canceling the event, but maybe adding different parts, maybe like a taco tasting part, just, just adding different aspects. Maybe if the community doesn't want to see the wine tasting anymore, maybe we can transition down the road into something different, just an idea.
Tequila and tacos.
Yeah, Sue, well, thank you for all of your help and the staff and everything because I know it's a huge event to try to put on. But I believe that Riverbank is known for the cheese and wine, so I don't want to see it go away. But I think that if we have it in-house, where we hire somebody part-time, because I, I really would like to keep it here. And there's a lot of options that we could, you know, come up with and think about. But I'm glad we're going to revisit this in January because I have some more ideas. So, thank you.
Just thank you for being candid with the valuation because I think it was things that we all recognize. So I'm looking forward to more suggestions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sue. Item 8.1, public comments. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes or as stated by the presiding officer, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. Do I have anyone that has comments? Okay, let's start with the lady just behind there that I spoke. Yeah, come on up. State your name, please.
Good evening. Catherine Dickey Wells. 217 Hoag Road, Modesto, off of McHenry, where that little dead-end road over the river bottom. My family has lived, I'm going to give you a little history lesson. They came to Crow's Landing in 1850. My great-great-grandfather, great-great-great-grandfather was William Crow. We have been in this valley from the beginning. Crow's Landing was the dropping spot of their supplies from Stockton. We have been in agriculture. We've been in farming. My father grew up in Ripon. They were not allowed, the boys, his cronies, were not allowed to go to the river during the time when the Meewux were migrating through to get to the ocean, to the Bodega Bay area, to play because they were concerned. So or when they were migrating back into the mountains to go back up to Twalomee and Pinecrest and, and all those areas where they were in the summer, the spring, summer, and fall. We have, my father bought 28 acres, 30 acres on McHenry and Hoag Road, 1950-ish. He worked for MIT forever, but he also farmed. That was his hobby. He was on the tractor. I was on the tractor. We were on the bluff, looking over the Riverwalk. We, we've watched cows. We've watched tomatoes. We've watched crow, corn. We've had floods. My dad went down there with his canoe to rescue a kitten off of the stump that my mother knew was going to die. We've had cougars on logs down there in the flood with dead on the, in the canoe. We have, it's agriculture. It's, it needs to stay agriculture. We have water problems. Your fire chief here is fabulous because of my parents being as old as they were when they, before they died, and my husband. I know your fire chief on a first-name basis, and most of his crew, they're phenomenal. We, but they're not ready for this amount of houses. Personally, we don't want to look on rooftops. But aside from that, my will has dropped nine feet in one year. The fire department isn't ready for that. Do they know this is coming? Because I haven't talked to him yet. That's on my job. Anyway, those are my concerns. I've been here forever. I'm part of that land. I've lived on that 30 acres my whole life. I just have a lot of concerns for, for all of us and our agriculture. Thank you ever so much. And I apologize for my phone going off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone else ready to speak? Please state your name and address.
My name's Libby Longstaff. I live on Christmas Tree Lane in Riverbank. I have grown up in this area forever as well. And I have spoken to you several times, and I appreciate your attention every time. I wanted to, last time, Mayor O'Brien seemed concerned about the need for development and the need for housing and feeling that maybe the Riverwalk was serving a need that could not be served in any other way. And I wanted just to quickly point out, you could do this in a second on your own phone. But there are literally thousands of acres around Riverbank where the soil is shallow, the hard pan is high, not suitable for the kind of agriculture that can happen in the river bottom. We need soils that are at least six to 10 feet deep. It's, it's some of the very last soil of that quality in California. But just slightly east and slightly south, we don't have that quality. And we don't have a lot of development. And the infrastructure, although it would never support this kind of development, is a lot closer to supporting this development than the infrastructure that is completely non-existent in the river bottom. I have the concerns of soil, flooding, water. I have many concerns, but I think tonight, what I really just wanted to make totally clear, there's a ton of alternative. It's not necessary to take this very rare area and put houses on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak?
Hi, my name is Karen Penrato. I live at 524 Hoag Road. I'm here to let you know that I oppose the, the proposed housing development project of Riverwalk. For state, you know, the reasons we've stated before, it's prime agricultural land, rare in the world. It feeds a lot of people. It's adjacent to the Santa Soss River, so you have wildlife that would be impacted, wildlife corridors that'll be impacted, as well as, as Kathy mentioned, the Indian tribes that came through. So we're talking artifacts, you know, arrowheads, possibly grinding bowls, pistols, those kinds of things. We're talking about infrastructure, infrastructure, lack of infrastructure and the cost of it for the fire departments, the ambulance, police, all of those. There, it's a hard, it's hard to maintain as it is currently and to add the potential of 33 homes. We're talking about fighting litigation that will occur if this, if it's attempted to go through. My mind just went blank for everything else, but it's just, it's the wrong project. It's the wrong place for this project. You know, there's, you know, looking at infill in your area, there is poor quality soils that are available. And so I'm hoping that all of you think very carefully about the decision that you'll be making. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, council members. My name's Jamie Agers. I live at 7730 McHenry Avenue. It's in the unincorporated area of Santa Soss County. But within the Riverwalk proposed project, you've heard from me many times. I'm just here to tell you this evening that it's still a beautiful time in the ag community in our area. Harvest is done. We're tilling up the land for the next crops. We finished our last irrigation of the season. They've tilled the property behind us, which would be Riverwalk. It was corn this year, and it's all tilled up. And so now we look forward And so now we look forward to the dormant season and the budding in the spring. And I'm just here to tell you again that this is not the place to pave over and put homes because it's the highest possible quality soil in our state. And it's prime as per the state's designation, and it is not the place to put homes. Homes should be placed on soils of lesser quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Edward Jones. A lot of people know me as Fast Eddie.
Where you live, Eddie?
I live in twenty-nine oh seven Passer Road. At the mobile home park, Park Sierra it is. Uh, I noticed, uh, they want to raise the water. They want to raise the water price.
Eddie, we can't discuss that right now because that's on our agenda, isn't it?
I can't say anything about that? Okay. I want to thank the city for the housing, your new housing you're putting up. And, uh, that's it.
Eddie, you can go ahead and make your statement. Go ahead and make your statement.
Oh, about.
The comment about the water, you can.
You can.
Go ahead.
Because every time the water goes up, I live in a mobile home park, there's only about fifty trailers. But, uh, you jump the water park about, build to the park about two hundred dollars. And then that runs through the whole park. We all jump our, our payments. I realize that a lot of people know that Park Sierra is about the best trailer park you could be in. As far as location, quietness, it's an adult park. And a lot of people don't live there very long, but the biggest problem is everybody's on some kind of a payment, welfare, social security or something. And it, it's hard making it. So whoever you can talk to about maybe cutting it down or giving us old folks some, a little, a bigger break. I, I know, I, I would appreciate it because I'm limited what I can get. So if, if you guys can do something about that, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Good evening, council members and Vice Mayor. My name is Vicky Holt and I'm the branch manager at the Riverbank Library. And I have a few activities I want to tell you about that are happening this month. This session of Storytime goes on, um, until November twenty-ninth. We will take December off and we'll resume back in January. Uh, we have both English and bilingual storytimes and they alternate Tuesdays. You can sign up for Storytime on our website, stannasosslibrary.org. The November craft is tomorrow at four P M. We're making pom-pom turkeys. We have a few more openings, um, so they can sign up on our website or give us a call if they need help signing up. The book club is reading Mr. Churchill's Secretary, a Maggie Hope mystery set in London at the beginning of World War Two. It's written by Susan Aleah McNeil. The discussion is on Tuesday, November twenty-ninth at four P M. We have a few extra copies at the library, so you can come by and get a, a copy if you want to join us. All these programs at the library are free to the public and it's because of the Eighth of Ascent dedicated sales tax that we're able to offer these services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Barney Agers. I live at seventy-seven thirty McHenry Avenue, which is on the west border of the proposed R W, uh, project. I will be very brief. I oppose this project as does my wife and most of my neighbors for many reasons. I won't go into detail, but, um, you know, the environmental re- repercussions. Here's air, uh, you recently had an air issue, uh, here in Riverbank, um, save the air quality. This is the wrong place to plant thirty-three hundred homes for so many reasons. That's a thirty percent increase in homes in Riverbank. It would become a bedroom community for Stockton, Tracy and Westward. I don't think it, the, the benefits of putting that many homes down there would, the negative, the negative factors, the negative impacts would outweigh the benefits. We need a buffer between Modesto. We need to maintain this buffer between Modesto and Riverbank and Del Rio. We ask that you oppose this and you vote no. Study the upcoming draft environmental re- uh, impact report intensely. And do not rush through a vote. Please do yourselves a favor and vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Okay, then I will move to the consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are to be acted up on by a thing of, just a moment. Were there any what body from Zoom? Okay, thank you. All items listed on the consent counter are to be acted up on by a single action of the city council, LRA board, unless requested by an individual council authority member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendations of staff will be accepted and acted, acted upon by the motion of the city council, LRA board. Item nine point one, waived readings, all readings of ordinances and resolutions except by title are waived. Item nine point two, approval of the October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two city council and local redevelopment au- authority board minutes. Item nine point three, special event request approval for the Mujeres in Accion, Women in Action. Item nine point four, a resolution to award bid for the Roseville Avenue sidewalk project to Taylor Backhoe Services Incorporated, DBA, TBS contractors, and authorize execution of future change orders. Item nine point five, a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the installation of the new public works office. Are there any comments from the public?
Well, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to pull item, um, nine point three for further discussion.
Okay, been asked pulled item nine point three for further discussion. I bring this back to the council.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent counter with the exception of nine point three.
Second.
Councilmember Odiva?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, item nine point three, we can have later on. Okay.
Vice Mayor, we're, we can have the discussion now.
Okay, we go ahead.
Okay. Can you give us, um, more information about the, the project, I mean, the event? I mean, I know that it is scheduled for June twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. And I like that, you know, the, the theme of the project and so forth, but I'd like to just get a little bit more information about it.
If we, if we could have that organizer, I don't know if they're in the audience, because I had concerns about this event too. If they're in the, if they're in the audience, if they could speak.
It doesn't appear they're in the audience, but Sue Fitzpatrick has been working closely with the coordinator Christina Avalos, um, and can provide some, um, feedback on the event itself.
Good.
Thanks.
Correct. So last summer, um, there's a similar event by the same person, Christina Avalos and the Women of Action. And they had a one-day event at the community center and the idea was to, um, recognize or celebrate two, two states in Mexico, which she did, and it was an okay event. It wasn't very large. There were some people that came and went, but it wasn't, um, it wasn't a large event. So she came back to the city and wanted to do a two-way, two-day event this time and have alcohol in the park in a beer garden, which brings us to council because we do have a, uh, alcohol prohibition in parks unless we get a permit for a special event. So, um, anyway, she wants to do it again for two days this time, um, next year, June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. And, um, have, uh, a band on the outside, have food vendors and information vendors on the inside, a beer garden on the outside and recognize three states. So, um, that's the idea and, um, I don't know what other questions there are, but.
This would be at the community center?
It would be at the community center building and in the community center park.
Okay, and the hours?
Ten to seven P M, I believe.
On both days?
On both days. So it would end at seven and then it would close up. Everything would close and then she'd open again the next morning. So she'd be reserving the, the building and the park for those two days. Um, it would be open to the public. We would provide security. We have met with the sheriff's department and they've given their, um, you know, parameters of what would happen, uh, if there was alcohol in the park, what would be required. So that's kind of where we are and we wanted to let her know what council's decision was, uh, early on because she does have to have time to plan.
I would just like to make a suggestion that on Sunday we close an hour earlier. Have it end at six instead of at seven.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot to clean up and the staff needs time and, you know, Monday we're, got to go back to work. And I would just like to take that in consideration and close an hour early.
Okay, I can note that.
Sue, I've got a question. Is she, so our sheriff's staff is going to provide the security?
No, they would not. They are aware of the, of the event if it was to occur. We would provide security, uh, the city as we do at other events such as that, um, according to their advice. So for example, if there was going to be three hundred people, um, and there was a Burt Beer Garden, they would tell us how many security guards we should have and we would, um, have the event coordinator pay for that.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't have any, any concerns. I'd love to see another cultural event, uh, two-day event. The only concern, the only reason I wanted to discuss this a little bit for the, was with the organizer, was I, I attended the last event that she held. I came around two o'clock and, um, wasn't very fully prepared. I was actually setting up tables, so I just wanted to make sure that they were fully staffed and they were able to handle this. If they're expanding it to a two-day event. But yeah, so I'm, I'm on board. Uh, just want, I don't know if there's any oversight from us, making sure like they're going to be fully okay and not pulling from city staff when they're not supposed to, so.
Right. What we would do is we provide site monitors that would, and park aids, that would keep the park in order and that would keep the facility in order, um, and then security. But as far as her organization of the event, that would be up to her. City staff would make sure it's safe and that it's, um, within the parameters of the city ordinances and so forth.
Sue, I have another question. Is, uh, it possible for her to come to another meeting and speak to us so we could talk to her exactly, or is, that's a council feel that's necessary?
She would be willing. I'm surprised. She must have forgotten. She was supposed to come tonight. Maybe something came up. But, um, I'm sure she would be more than willing to come if you wanted her to.
So do you want it, would you like to speak to her personally? Have it under the council?
I mean, I would, I would support moving it to another meeting if that's possible. I mean, I don't see why, why not, but that's my opinion.
I'm okay with another meeting.
Okay, I, I will ask her and we'll put that on the agenda. We have some time. We'll do it soon though, that she has plenty of time to plan. But, um, we can put it back on, on presentation or whatever you.
We don't want to delay her, but her project, so if it's going to delay the project, then, you know, I'll vote for it. Uh, but if it's okay for the next.
I just wanted to clarify, did we want to move this item to the next meeting, which would be December thirteenth? Or did you want to consider the item tonight and then she could come forward on the thirteenth and just give a brief presentation to council?
I like the second idea.
So what's our final decision?
Make a motion to go ahead and approve item, uh, nine point three.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been made and there's a motion.
Councilmember Odiva?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, then we'll pick it up at another meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, see where I'm at here. Any other comments from the public on the other, of the consent counter? Then I'll bring it back to council.
Uh, we're on item number ten.
Oh, number ten, I'm sorry. And, yeah, going to the public hearing. The notice for this public hearing was published on October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two in the Riverbank News. I opened the public hearing. On this item, members of the public have an opportunity to provide public comment.
Vice Mayor, if you, we will have a presentation beforehand, um, by Tammy El Cantor on this item, and then we can open the public hearing afterwards.
Okay.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. So, um, this is an annual report that we do. Um, so tonight we are, I'm asking you guys to accept the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two A B sixteen hundred report of system development fees. So what is A B sixteen hundred? Um, it was a measure that set forth specific requirements as to how local government imposed, collected and reported various aspects of their system development fee program, codified a section, codified as section sixty-six zero zero one of the California Government Code and was effective in January of nineteen eighty-nine. And our si- system development fees have been in effect since nineteen sixty-seven and codified in our municipal code under one fifty point three one. So system development fees are defined as a charge by a local government agency to help fund and pay for the construction or needed expansion of infrastructure and improvements as related to new development. The purpose of these fees is to defray all or a portion of the cost of public facilities related to the development project. So based on the A B sixteen hundred, the following information must be made available to the public within a hundred and eighty days after the last day of each fiscal year. A description of the type of fee in the account or fund, the amount of the fee, the beginning and ending balance of the account or fund, the amount of the fees collected, the interest earned, identification of each public improvement on which fees were expended and identification of an approximate date by which the construction of the public improvement will commence. Description of each in, enter fund, transfer or loan made from the account or fund, including the public improvement on which the transfer or loan fees will be expended. The amount of refunds made during the fiscal year. So in our system development fees, we have some inactive funds that are no longer collecting revenue. Expenditures made are included within our capital improvement plan and our current inactive fund balances as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, we have our bridges and roads fund that has approximately thirty-six thousand. Our overpass fund of one, uh, fund one forty-five has a hundred and ninety thousand and then our railroad crossing fund of four hundred dollars approximately. So our active funds are actively collecting revenue from new developments. Expenditures are made pursuant to the city's Nexus Fee Study as of January twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen. Um, and, um, before you are the balances of those current funds. So streets and public works, um, about three point six million. The water fund has almost nine hundred thousand. The wastewater fund is currently at a deficit. Um, our storm drainage fund has one point seven million, parks and wrecks, seven hundred thousand and police and general government at almost six hundred thousand. So some of our project highlights over this last fiscal year was Oakdale Road to Morel, um, to Westgate. Um, and Roseville Crawford Sewer Project and Countryside Park Developer, uh, reimbursement for that countryside park. So tonight it is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution. So tonight it is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution accepting the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two annual A B sixteen hundred report of system development fee activity. So I can answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? From the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. No questions? Okay, we can move on then.
Oh, can entertain a motion.
Okay, then I bring it back to the council.
So I'll make a motion to approve the item ten point one.
I second.
Council member Odiva?
Yes.
Council member Hernandez?
Yes.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, and now I'm going to move on to item eleven point. Before I do that, are there any comments from the? Okay, and then I'll move on to new business, item eleven point one. A resolution approving the city of Riverbank Local Hazard Mitigation Plan update and our incorporation by reference into the safety element of the city of Riverbank General Plan.
And Norma Torres Manriquez will be providing the staff report on this item.
And good evening, everyone. Um, this is a a report that has a lot of mixed emotion for me because what we're presenting tonight really has taken a lot of great responsibility, a lot of decision and planning on behalf of staff and our partners from not just the county but state and also our neighboring counties. Even though it's, it's a lot of nervousness for me, it is also really exciting to be able to to bring this project to you and in its final state and we're hopefully looking at approving it. So the hazardous mitigation plan update, um, is going to be, um, basically our plan of how are we going to be? Here it is. So what is the hazardous mitigation? It's any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate long-term risks to human life and property from natural or human caused hazards. The hazardous mitigation plan plays an important role in building our community resilience. It's part of our emergency preparedness. Um, and it has played an integral part for many years from the state, federal, state and local level. In preparing this plan, we looked at the four phases that FEMA has asked us to take a look at and not to bore you, but just give you a brief overview. The phases include phase one, which create, was creating the team and the community engagement strategy. Uh, the mitigation strategies in this plan were a huge collaboration uh, between the city and again, a local emergency off, office of emergency services and also the state level. Um, the other thing with this particular, uh, plan is that there was a consultant that was hired by the county. And they played an integral role in keeping us together. Um, phase two is our risk assessment and this is a bri- brief, uh, overview of what is in our plan. This particular risk assessment is, um, specifically for Riverbank. The basic plan is in the hazardous mitigation plan that is Stanislaus County's plan. And every city was, went ahead and took their own annex and took their own risk assessments and really ranked them from highest priority to least. Phase three that we were looking at basically, um, is what strategies and goals and our objectives. And this took, um, staff some time to go through surveys, make sure that we looked at the various different possible natural disasters and what leads to what. So, okay, an earthquake could lead to. All right, so now we have issues with, you know, maybe trains, maybe, uh, you know, the dams or, so it just took some time to go over. Um, and we tried to be as careful as possible in looking at the different um, mitigation actions that we were going to have specifically for Riverbank. So again, the hazardous mitigation plan is a countywide plan. Each city will have their own annex to that plan. Our mitigation actions, um, we looked at, like we mentioned, we looked at seven mitigation actions. Uh, three are multiple hazards. One was a dam incident. One was a flood, uh, land, landslide and some public health hazard and one was a public health hazard. The specifics are in the annex, they're in the report. But basically this took our, our staff some time to take a look at and really see where do we rank these specifically for our city. Let's just continues on here. So a snapshot of the schedule of what it took to get to this plan and it is taken over fifteen months. We're at a sixteen month plan. It is a lot of outreach. It was a lot of, a planning and anytime you have to deal unfortunately with state and federal, um, organizations, uh, there's just a process to go through. Um, the actual organization of the plan, the county actually, um, the main plan has like the eight sections and they've been formatted, they logistically flow. And then our city's portion, the annex actually also incorporates the same type of flow. But it is specific to the city and all nine cities have agreed to be part of the county plan. Not all nine have taken them to, um, an approval state or to their council yet. Um, but the flow and the information is, is pretty concise and easy to follow. So phase four, which we're at right now is the, um, the plan adoption and the implementation and maintenance. So the plan adoption at this point, at the state level, they have reviewed, completed their review. FEMA is in the process of reviewing the plan and hasn't, hasn't sent us our official formal, you, you done a great job, you're done. Um, the county, uh, board, county board of supervisors have adopted it and we are bringing it to you today. Um, if adopted today, it will be, uh, approved pending the adoption of the letter from FEMA. Uh, once it is approved, then it falls back on the community and staff to make sure that we keep it current. Now we keep the public involved during this whole process and that's why it's been so long. There have been opportunities for people to go to workshops, people re- review the plan. And then just, um, to create a safe and resilient community, it's just going to continue to take all of us to make sure that we're updated, we're up, you know, nobody counted on FEMA, nobody had the health hazard at the top of their list for many years, but now it's on everybody's top five. Um, but the other thing that's very important and I know our public works department is currently looking for funding assistance. So the approval of this plan will open us to the opportunity of, um, some FEMA funding, some state and local funding. So we're hoping to get this approved before the end of the year. If you have any questions, this was not a plan that definitely, we did not do this ourselves. We had a lot of input from office of emergency services from the state again. Uh, but I would do want to give a, a big shout out to the consultant with W S P USA. Uh, in particular, Juliana Prosperi, um, and her team, they have held, held our hands, held my hand through this whole process. Um, it isn't one of the plans that is glorious reading, but it is something that is vital and important. I know we have in our strategic plan. So if you have any questions or concerns, just let me know.
Sure. Thank you, Norma, for that presentation. So I've sat in on a couple of the Calo, oh yes, meetings. This is super important. Thank you to the county for letting Riverbank kind of, you know, mold it to our needs, uh, talking about some of the mitigations, like if we had like a train derailment, flooding was mentioned today. Um, so what would we do with something like that? Propane? Uh, expl- you know, something would happen with the propane business at the, at the L R A, like, you know, would be, would we be prepared for something like that? So I'm glad we have this plan in the works. Uh, and you, you mentioned the FEMA, so the, is it the brick grant that we could possibly? Go for, so, so Fasetti, you were, you were mentioning like, you know, there's something that the council could do to help, you know, lower the rates of the water, like this grant would give us fifty million dollars right there. So that, so that would lower the rates right, right away. So this is, this is super important to approve this. Um, yeah, I don't see how we would not approve this. So, um, I'll be in full support of this.
Um, I wanted to just, uh, clarify that this plan does include the Riverbank Industrial Complex and all the businesses that are out there in case something does happen.
We included all of the, uh, parameters through Riverbank, all of the, um, whatever is in our, our city limits is included. Just want to make sure. Now, we, what we have also done, because we have our our areas that are buffers between the other counties is we have actually made sure that those stakeholders, which are for example, the city of Escalon, that they are at the table when we're looking at these because if something happens to us in the river or at the wastewater treatment plant, it's not only affecting our city, our county, but the neighboring also.
Okay, and so since Jacob Harris Park is really not in Stanislaus County, so you had San Joaquin County at the table also?
Yes, so the, this hazardous mitigation plan is throughout all the counties. Everybody's doing their own process. Uh, but it is required that we have a hazardous mitigation plan. This will, when we look at the hazardous mitigation plan, it's a little bit different than looking at our emergency operation plan. So looking at the emergency operation plan, you might see more specifics on, for example, the L R A. So, or, you know, neighboring cities like Escalon. So currently we're going to go through a training with T I D. We were like, well, we don't get T I D, uh, but they, they do some work with the, um, some, um, the dam, Don Pedro Pan, dam. And it's just again, doing those collaborative stakeholder and, you know, brainstorming us to, okay, who all needs to be at the table?
Thank you.
I just want to make a quick point of clarification. So remember that when we're going after these grants, it's not guaranteed, right? But we have an amazing staff that's going to go after every dollar. So I don't want anybody to think like, oh, we, we, we approve this, we're going to give fifty million dollars, like, right? So but we do have the staff that's going to push it through. So, uh, fully in support of the staff's staff always does an amazing job. So, thank you.
We are, we are one of the first cities to get this approved. So the other, I, I think there's one other one and then others will follow. But even statewide, uh, for a while, um, the last since two thousand seventeen, uh, we used to have, prior to two thousand seventeen, we had the multi-jurisdictional plans. So the whole county basically came together. They're easier to follow. Not every individual plan is different. In the case of an emergency or we're needing to do something, it's easier to go through and, and follow our process. It wasn't until twenty twenty two that we're looking at another multi-jurisdictional. Since two thousand and ten that we did our last one, it to two thousand and seventeen that we had to renew it. At the two thousand seventeen mark, most of the cities in the state did not have a multi-jurisdictional plan and very few had their own because state made it so difficult for us to complete our own. So this is going to be nice. We'll all be back together and, and actually at the state level, they made recommendations and changes to the, to how we get this done.
Um, I just want to thank you for all your work and to further emphasize the importance of it. Um, it is very interesting reading, um, and it, it breaks on the, the demographics of our community and just the, the pressures it says in here to develop and, and the points of this kind of plan. Um, the median age in the city is thirty two years old, um, and twenty percent are under eighteen. And so you know, um, you mentioned bringing everyone to the table and then keeping all of that in mind, um, is key. So, thank you.
Yeah, the outreach to do, you know, what they could in social media. Again, it isn't something that everybody's like, me, I want to know about this. But they did try to do more social media outreach than we had in the past. So people, you know, have a chance to, to, to voice their, their opinions.
Okay, Norma, first of all, I want to thank you for all the hours that you've put in on this. I think this is a great idea that we need to pass this plan and we need it because of the way the world is. We need to have, be prepared for a lot of things that you brought up tonight. So I support everything the council said so far about it. And I will bring it back to the council now. Oh, pardon me. First, is there any questions from the public? Then I will bring it back to the council for decision.
Make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve item eleven point one.
Second.
We have a, a motion, a first and a second.
Council member Odiva?
Yes.
Council member Hernandez?
Yes.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Okay, item eleven point two. A resolution for Thunderbolt Wood Treating waiver request for system development fees.
We have Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager, who will provide the staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So first of all, um, Thunderbolt, um, would like to, um, construct a twenty four thousand two hundred square foot cover over an integral piece of their, um, process there at their, um, company. And when, um, they did go through, they applied for a building permit and we're at the point now where the building permit could be issued, but that's also when system development fees need to be paid. So we provided the fees, um, to the company. Um, the system development fees, their fees charged for change in use or new construction or the expansion or addition or the addition of existing, uh, non-residential structures. And it's to help mitigate the unfund- unfunded portion of the determined impact of that development. As I mentioned, the structure is, um, twenty four thousand two hundred square feet. And my understanding is in this area, it's an existing area of the plant. Um, there are some chemicals there and they are exposed, um, to, uh, rainwater at this point. And the rainwater, um, and other waters, um, with these chemicals need to be removed. Um, that's part of their process, but installing a cover over this process would reduce the amount of water that they have to remove um, as part of the step. So the system development fees include streets and public works, water, wastewater, storm drain, parks wreck, police administration. Um, so this total system development fees are in excess of three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. Um, there are some building permit fees added on to that and of course, the county takes their, their, uh, piece of the pie as well. After they receive these, um, fees, uh, the city did receive a letter from the company um, discussing the, uh, chemical process and the reason that they did not feel they should have to pay the storm drain fee. Um, it also discussed, um, that there, uh, wasn't the need to pay the water fees as well, that the only water going to that uh, structure, uh, would be the fire sprinklers. So the waiver of the water and storm water would be a reduction, or would waive, um, approximately a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. Um, that, that's what the city would not, uh, get as payment of the system development fees in this instance. Um, also, um, I need to bring up as well that they did construct a new structure in twenty twelve. And they were allowed to pull the building permit without paying system development fees at that time because the sys- the city was going to go through, um, a fee update. And so there was a chance that the fees could come in higher or they could come in lower. So they were allowed to sit back and wait until that process was completed. And in the end, the fees did end up higher, um, than they were originally when the building permit was pulled. So the city, um, uh, assessed them the, uh, system development fees, uh, which were not paid. In twenty seventeen, they came before the council and asked if they could have these fees waived. Um, there was some discussion and in the end, the city did not waive those fees. And the city ended up putting a lien against the property for about twenty six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So that part remains unpaid. So these system development fees are separate, um, from what the lien is. So the council has some options. So the council has some options. You could determine that the new structure is subject to the fees as a standard practice in the city of Riverbank. You could determine that a modification to a lesser amount is appropriate, fair, and within the public interest. Or you could determine that the applicant statements, uh, within their letter, the requests are valid, and the project would not be subject to the water and wastewater nexus fees. So you could waive them, or you could reduce them, or you could tell them that they have to pay the full amount. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And we also have the, um, let me get back to this page here. There we go. We also have, um, representatives from the company here too, um, that can, um, provide additional information for you.
Okay, do I have any questions from the public? Then I will bring it back to the council for discussion.
Would the council like to hear maybe comments from the representative first, before we have a discussion?
Yes, please.
If anybody would like to make a comment from the, from the business, please step up.
Hi. My name is George Hartman. I'm an attorney. I practice in Stockton, California, thirty-four twenty-five Brookside Road, Suite A. And first I want, I have to apologize to you, Vice Mayor Campbell. I walk into a room and forget why I went there, so we're even. I, um, I was not retained by Thunderbolt for this proceeding. I've represented the Lavallo family and their businesses for over forty years. I guess you'd call me their corporate general counsel. And, um, as far as the legalities go, let me just say this fee request is completely out of line. Uh, I'll let Mr. Hallen in, um, explain the Nolan Dolan rules to you, uh, as well as the latest Supreme Court case on the subject. But there has to be what Nolan Dolan calls, uh, a rough approximation or a relationship to the fee, of the fee to the impact. And so, what's, what's being proposed here is not a structure in the traditional sense. It's an awning. That's all. It's an awning to cover the storage area for treated lumber. Thunderbolt is in the business of treating lumber to preserve it. Its products are sold all over the United States. It's been, uh, going business in Riverbank since nineteen seventy-four or seventy-six. Uh, it has unique products that no one else sells, that are sold all over the United States. Thunderbolt employs fifty people presently. And if you follow the Department of Labor standards and use a seven multiplier, that's three hundred and fifty jobs that Thunderbolt is responsible for in this area. And so, since nineteen sixty-four, fifty-eight years ago, when Mr. Lavallo started Doraville Trust Company, Thunderbolt has been a solid citizen of Riverbank and Doraville. The, I, I wish I could have added total taxes and other fees paid to the city, the county, et cetera, over a fifty-eight year span, but I would guess it would be prodigious. And, and when I saw this bill, my first question to the company was, well, how much is this project gonna cost? Now, the bill is over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the project, all in, might be eight hundred thousand dollars. Facially, that's a little off. I can understand permit fees being related to the project, but these aren't even close. So let's get to the heart of it. You're talking about impact fees as part of your system fees. Well, does this, does this proposed shelter over treated lumber have any impacts? Yes, it saves water. It collects water. That's its purpose, is to collect water to be used in the processing part of Thunderbolt. Currently, Thunderbolt does not put any water in your storm drains or sewer. All water is retained on site. They have a treatment plant on site. What this will enable the company to do is to collect rainwater, A, and have water that it doesn't have to process, that it can use in its wood-treating processes. And B, water will not be hitting lumber that's been treated with potentially hazardous chemicals. Wood pilings and other kinds of lumber used in construction has to be treated in order to avoid rot. And so treated lumber is an important commodity. The next point to consider is that, I, I think, I think maybe, uh, the planning department didn't understand what I'm telling you. Because we're not building a building. We're not adding buildings to another building. We're building an awning. You might call it like a pole barn, something like that. Not only will it not have an impact in a negative way, it has positive impacts by way of keeping water off of treated product and allowing for catching rainwater. And our request is not to reduce the fee to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, as the planning department stated. Our request is to waive all impact fees of any kind, and to charge a fair permit fee that is roughly proportionate, under the Nolan Dolan standard, to the nature of the project. Now, I have with me a couple of folks. I have Carrie Casey, who is an engineer. She's done all of the environmental engineering, water stuff, at the Thunderbolt plant. She's here if you have any questions for her. She can probably tell you in much better words what I was trying to say, if you, if you want the details. Also here is Alex Flores, who is the general manager of Thunderbolt, who can tell you whatever you wanna know about Thunderbolt, and its operations, and how, uh, treated water is produced on the site. They've recently upgraded their water treatment or waste treatment processes, so they, they're even more efficient. Thunderbolt is a good citizen in terms of the environment. They've spent probably close to a million dollars making sure that they do not contaminate anything. And that even though they're working with highly toxic chemicals, they're handled in a safe manner, and not allowed to escape into the wild. So, I personally wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity to not be sitting in front of a television tonight, obsessing about election results. Thank you very much. And, and if you would like to hear from Carrie or Alex, let me know. I think Carrie probably should stand up and make a few remarks to you about how the system works briefly. And you can ask her any questions you want, but only if you want that to happen.
Do you feel that's necessary?
Counsel, if I might, um, this is a major change in the request.
Yes.
So I don't know if it, at, this is the, uh, time to do that. We have a lot of just basic issues that, that would need to be discussed further, especially with the change in the request. But, for example, well, I won't even start, but look, I'll just keep it there.
So we do just wanna clarify that the reason for the request, um, being brought forward was a specific letter written to our building and planning department, um, by Mrs. Casey, requesting only the storm and the water fees to be waived. And so, we feel at this time that if the request is to consider waiving all of the system development fees, based on some of the information provided, uh, that we would take this item back and bring it back at a future date.
Well, let me speak. That communication between, uh, Ms. Casey and you was, I'm not privy to. Is that the way you want it?
That's a specific letter that we've included in the staff report, um, which does mention just waiving the storm system development fees and the water system development fees.
Yeah, I'll let Ms. Casey speak to that.
Um, so I don't, I'm not certain that that, but, specific request was made in that letter. Um, I was just asked to give my opinion on, on the fees and what the project impact would be, what the project, the point of the project would be. Uh, I, we didn't make any specific requests for dollar amount reduction in that letter.
I think at this point in time, we'll need to pull this item and bring it back for consideration.
I agree. We need to bring the item back because it's been changed. We haven't had a chance to really look at it in that manner.
Thank you. Uh, if, if you do that, I, um, would it be all right if I don't come back? Oh, wait, don't all say yes at once.
That's up to you.
Well, no, I, I, my job tonight was to try and help you understand that there, something's gone off the rails somewhere in this. There's a, there is a gross misunderstanding of what this.
It didn't go off the rails from the city side. Let me say that. Thank you.
Pardon me?
It did not go off the rails from the city side. Thank you.
Mr. Hallenhead, I respect you, but I profoundly disagree. So, thank you.
So, we will look, look it over and bring it back to another meeting in the near future, because, uh, there's been some changes that we were not aware of when you spoke just a few minutes ago. Is that okay with everybody here?
Yep.
Okay.
I agree.
And when? Make that as a motion? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council.
Was that a motion, Vice Mayor? Are we getting a motion to?
Yes.
To pull the item? Okay, so I'll second it.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to go to comments and reports. A brief report on notable attendance in a meeting, conference, or other notable topics of city business shall be made. The Brown Act does not allow for discussion or action of items by the City Council LRA board during this time. Before we do that, did I have anything from Zoom on that last item? Okay, thank you. Okay. That, okay, then we'll start with, uh, Councilmember Reby, oh, staff. Let's start with staff, excuse me.
So Vice Mayor, uh, members of the council, just wanted to remind everybody that city offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday in observance of the Veterans Day holiday. Because our next meeting is not going to be until December thirteenth, I did want to make sure that the public was aware that city offices would also be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday between November twenty-third and the twenty-fifth. Um, and also, of course, want to invite everybody to our annual Christmas parade, which is going to be held on Saturday, December tenth. Um, the craft fair portion will start at twelve PM here at downtown, and our parade will start at five-thirty with the tree lighting to follow after that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other staff? Okay, then I will bring it back to the council again, and Councilmember Reby, will you start?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, so I just wanted to mention the Veterans Day Celebration, uh, AVF, that was presented with a proclamation today. So it's gonna be November eleventh. It's gonna be, uh, meet and greet, five PM. Uh, it's gonna be with the special guest Medal of Honor recipient, Robert M. Patterson, and with the dinner to follow at six PM. Uh, the tickets are fifty dollars, but it's a fundraiser, so it will be going to a, a good, a good cause there. Uh, they've done a lot, a lot of, uh, good things in the community. Fatsity can testify to that. Uh, they've also been working nationally, uh, working with deported veterans for minor offenses and bringing them back. I've already sent a letter of support, uh, for HR eleven eighty-two, uh, sent it to the House Committee of Veteran, uh, Veteran Affairs, uh, for a, uh, Veteran Deportation Reform Act, so I'm hoping that passes, uh, to get that passed. I'll be attending the Cal Cities Division Dinner December eighth, and other than that, hope everybody has a nice Thanksgiving, and I'm looking forward to seeing all the results here at, uh, eight o'clock for the elections.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes, Happy Election Day. Um, so something that's been important to me is, is bridging a stronger relationship with school districts, um, that touch Riverbank, and, um, so that means participating in events. And so I was a judge for, uh, Red Ribbon Week contests at Riverbank Language Academy, and, um, you know, it was great to see from kindergarten to seventh grade, the students participate in that. And, uh, I mean, just recently, the Dia de los Muertos event was amazing, and thank you to all the staff that, that put that together and put in work. And, um, we're gonna have a long break, so, um, happy holidays to everybody. We'll see you soon.
Remember Martinez?
Um, I wanna say thank you to our staff for the detailed reports, um, that were presented tonight, and thank you also to the staff for, and Nancy Garcia for an awesome Dia de los Muertos event. Uh, tomorrow is the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance Meeting at five-thirty at ten-ten-Tenth Street in downtown Modesto. Let's see, and also a reminder about our toy drive and car show on November the nineteenth, which is a Saturday from ten to four at Save Mart in the Crossroads Shopping Center. And, uh, thank you to all of our veterans for your service, and I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Okay. First of all, I wanna say thank you to the public for filling this, um, building tonight. Democracy only works if you, we hear from you, and we may not always agree, but we need to hear from you. And so, I appreciate everybody coming out and speaking their piece. Also, I'd like to thank the council that I've worked with for a number of years, and I think we had a particularly great year this year. We've made a lot of steps and a lot of things, and I wanna thank them for the time that they put into things. And Councilmember Hernandez mentioned something about the schools. I would like to see us work more closely with the schools for safety, for students like that walk or ride their bikes. I think that we need to get some flashing lights during, that can be done, like other towns, during the, say, beginning of school, when people, they're arriving and when they're leaving school, because we have had accidents in front of the schools. And I'd also like to see the school district, uh, discuss with us the possibility of putting up video cameras into schools that could go into our new videos that we're doing, so that we can have more, uh, participation with what's going on in those schools if something were to happen that none of us would like. And that's all I've had to say at this time. Okay? On that point, then I am going to end this meeting, and we are going to go into closed session. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, if you'd like to read the titles of each of the closed session items, just for the members of the public.
All right, I better read that. Item thirteen point one, Conference with Labor Negotiations. Item thirteen point two, Liability Claims. Item thirteen point three, Public Employment. Item thirteen point four, Public Employment. Item thirteen point five, Liability Claims, and...
We'll return to closed.
We will report back at it after we do it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Close. Close. Close.